Have motion to approve and or amend the agenda. I will. Doc? Cheryl second? You vote on that? Steve?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Doc? And Cheryl?
Yes.
Now I need approval and or uh, amend the consent agenda which is the minutes from our last meeting? Budget resolution, public hearing. Wilton Express liquor license and Magic Contract. Any comments on any of those, Chris?
I, I, I think I'll let you guys know the, the budget resolution, I put a typo on it, so we just have to redo it. It's the same thing we did before, so that's the reason we put it on the consent agenda. We set the public hearing for next time and then, uh, what?
And we got just one more last time to get it done.
Yeah, 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 anyway, I talked to the state, it's not a big deal. The Magic Contract, the price of that was gonna go up this year, but that was due to software costs. Uh, there with, with Magic are not increasing their fees, so.
And that's a bargain.
Yeah, they, they, they do a great job. It is so helpful.
Mm-hmm. Okay, can I have a motion? Second. Steve? Second. Any discussion? Well, Cheryl?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Citizens wanting to appear? You guys, you're here on a later.
Unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 outbreak, um, we are not able to put on our annual recital, um, at the school due to gathering numbers. We contacted the school and unfortunately, we have not heard back from them, but we have learned that anyone that comes into the facility, it would be a liability. So if someone were to catch COVID, like one of the kids, because it would be close to the parents, um, the school would be held responsible. And we decided we didn't want to put the school in that type of liability issue. So today Samantha came to me with the idea of wanting to do an outside recital. So I came down and talked to Officer Park. Um, what we would like to do is on Friday, June 26th, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m., we would like to know if we would have permission to use the basketball court to put on a recital for the kids. We'd also like to have from 4th Street down the railroad closed and that way we'd be able to have other small businesses like Tintin Vintage, um, Specialties, um, Short Photography, The Junction come in and blooming ideas come in instead of like a little old shop, because those businesses also have been impacted by the COVID-19 outbreak. Samantha would really like to do this because since April, since she had to quit, she is out of 15,000 plus on revenue. And it has taken, it's her, her business. And she'd also like to do a physical, so they can have a recital. And the parents are also out, some parents out of competition are hundreds, close to five or $600 just in dance costumes. So I am here because she is teaching dance until 8 o'clock. She has sometimes almost 12 hour workdays right now, just catching up from a month that she's expended for fall out. So we would like to know if you guys would be willing to help us out. We'd like to set up like what we need to at noon that day. And we would also like to use the community room to change because there's about 50 girls who would need somewhere to change. We also follow like we have pushed of show distancing guidelines on our parents, we don't let any adults in. My kid. Um, so we, we having our guide line for distance, that is what I'm saying. And then the only thing we would need, we would ask is like if we can use the barricades that the city uses because Samantha would charge for this event to kind of and catch up on the lost revenue. Because she asked, in the month of July, she planned on doing construction work to the studio. And the floor she's looking at of almost $10,000, so taking a $15,000 plus bid has, it's really hurt her financially. And she's been here for 12 years and she liked to stay here longer. So she had me come in and replace her, which she's obviously teaching cares, so.
What's the date? You didn't give us the date.
Um, I ordered June 26th. And we start at 6 and end by 8:30.
But you want to set up at noon?
Yeah, like the barricades and then, um, she's gonna look at, um, outsourcing someone maybe to do like a backdrop. Those people around here that's very artistic, like schoolteachers, uh, all. But she thought it would also help like the small businesses, like The Junction's been closed since they've been remodeling, blooming ideas, just places that are also small businesses, because, um, Samantha honestly did not fall by any of the grants from the state because she does not have payroll. She's a single person. So she also took a hit there. But she would like to continue staying open in Wilton, she doesn't want to have to close her doors.
Well, I, I think normally, though, the pros has a bike night and, you know, some of the motorcycles leave.
Is it a Friday? It's a Friday.
Yeah.
26th is a Friday.
Yes, yeah.
Um, there, I mean, just so you're aware of that, I guess, I don't know.
I don't think it'd bother them too much, really.
No, it probably don't. You gotta. No, if they're down here, okay.
Chris, do you?
I, I didn't.
No, she came down in 20 minutes, you know, we went out and walked it out and, um, I absolutely understand what she's saying, I ran a martial arts school for a long time. You know, having events like tournaments and dance recitals bring in a lot of revenue and that's needed revenue. At my school, the tuition that I charged was barely enough to keep, you know, to, to even out running the business, anything that I wanted to do outside of that for expenses was, was tournament based. So this is something that she.
There, there's no liability on us blocking the streets and them charging?
No, I don't think so. As long as, yeah.
And then tomorrow, we plan on, um, she, her insurance is through, like, the gym, so we plan on calling them tomorrow just to see what we need to do.
I, I think, uh, I mean, since it's not an agenda, we can't give a formal yes or no. We could do that at the next meeting, which is actually 22nd, but she would need an answer before then. So if anybody's got any serious objections, we need to bring them up now.
Strong in the case.
Yes.
My granddaughter did the same thing in outside D.O.A. in North Carolina for their dance. They had it out in the park or someplace that they could social distance it up and still did it.
The original plan they came to is they wanted to shut down 4th Street and do it out in the old Ford. We lived that close business and the compromise was the basketball court and then this section of the road, which doesn't impact anybody.
I know, right.
I think it's a great idea, let's do it in stroke.
Yeah, I, I think barring any, something crazy that would, you know, legally would shut us down. Right. I think it's a great idea. And the weather. Hopefully that.
Yeah. Cheryl? You're okay, we can't officially do anything.
So we, we need for the, meeting on the 22nd, we'd need a, a map of what, what you, what you're gonna close down and what you need from the city.
Yeah, I think it's not the greatest.
Oh, okay.
So we kind of, I mean, I can do a better one.
I know, that'll be fine.
That's good.
That's fine, if you, if you want to just.
Approve it tonight.
Yeah, just give it the date, we'll, we'll, yeah.
We'll have it on our agenda for.
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda for next time, but there's, but, but we need some, you know, know that you guys have some insurance for the event.
We're gonna tell parents, like, no alcohol.
Okay.
So that's the last thing you know.
Right.
Also counsel, last thing, they need, they need to use this room. Are we okay with that?
Yeah, they have to pay the rent.
Just like normal, if, if anybody else, if it's open, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah, call, call City Hall tomorrow and, and reserve the day.
And the barn out there is pretty scary, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that should be.
Put some, put something over the windows. If you have some questions, get ahold of Chris.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sure we will, because Samantha just started this on me.
Will you tell her you did a good job? Really?
You got it almost through.
We're, we're not too scary, too, so.
Thank you so much, the kids will appreciate it because some of them, we told them it wasn't looking good, so. It was fun, but looking happy now and we'll be more than thrilled, so.
Yep. Very good.
And I'm free to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Check with the police officer, here's the question for him. It's free to, it's free to come in, but it's $20 a lead.
Caesar. Okay. We have one, we have one here?
Yeah, we do, I'm actually here, hi guys.
Yeah.
I miss ya. Um, we got several housing inquiries, so this is a good thing, I mean, they're calling me on a daily basis. So, uh, I've been sending them off to Dale, Keever and Steve Gilbert and, you know, giving them the brochure and, you know, go on and tell them to go online. Um, you know, hopefully the three homes that I think we already have sold off those corners, well, they should start there pretty soon. That, that reminds me, should we be mowing it down there?
He bailed it.
Yeah, I think he bailed it.
Yeah, he bailed it.
So, yeah.
That was good because it was looking pretty hot here. I was telling her and I thought, oh my gosh, are we supposed to do that?
If, if we, we should probably be mowing our own lots. So, if, if we've, if we've closed down the lots, have we closed down a lot?
Yeah, I, we've got all four of our lots. Well, we still have the one corner, but we've got the other three corners and yes, they're ours.
Okay, all right, that's fine, I'll take care of it.
Good. Uh, and then you guys talk to Sean about the Highway 38, that's another one that's, that's, that's running up and I think my office is always done, City Hall here pretty soon.
Yeah, it's good there.
Yeah, and, and I'll make sure, and I do, uh, Diane Howard gave me all that wonderful furniture.
Six by six is big enough, right? Yeah. That six by six is big enough. No air conditioning?
No windows.
No windows, no heat, no air conditioning. Yes, you do, yes, you do.
So, yeah, so I really appreciate that.
It's coming, we.
And on Friday, uh, we may have another historic listing, so we have, uh, we have to meet with Chipo on Friday, it'll be a virtual meeting. It's the Spanish Inquisition, I had to go through it with my home and downtown and, you know, it is what it is, but we're gonna go for Ted's house, so.
Do I have to say anything? I just sit there and watch, right?
Well, you may have to, if you, you can come into my office, we'll do the virtual on, in my office with you and Dem and I and.
Yeah, the mad scientist must find out where.
For you to answer.
Okay.
So, that's, that's where I'm at.
Pick up musicians.
Just one thing, Becky, I mentioned to Chris, I don't know if I did to you, but there is another group building houses similar to this?
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
And now?
No, but it's, our prisons are making houses now.
Oh, uh-huh.
And I know, I'm with the Mustine Foundation Board, and they're working with West Liberty now, showing some of those, not having a lot of luck, but it's something we should maybe look at.
Look at, okay, yeah.
I can give you a contact.
Bring them out.
Yeah. Prison's doing it, teaching them carpentry.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, the foundation missing charges.
Okay, and I just have one more thing, I wanna really thank Sharon over there, I mean, I have a mother that can't see anymore, but she can hear and, and Sharon has been, uh, making, uh, uh, books on CD for her that I can pick up and take to her every day, and so I, I, I appreciate this Wilton Library, I can't tell you the, the, what they do for service is great, so thank you, Sharon.
What about your?
That's it.
Well, what about the little flower? Poppies, you want some of the poppies?
Yeah, I've got, I've gotta take these to the bank tomorrow, you guys wanna buy some poppies? Is there money in? Can you get a poppy? You can, I'm taking these to the bank.
Bring them over.
I'll pass them around, I certainly will, I was just at the auxiliary meeting.
Yeah, I was.
My grandma.
I was missing those this year, yeah.
We're getting, I know, we're getting, the paper forms are coming in like pad now.
Oh, is that right?
But this is a good thing.
I tie them on the back of my bicycle and they, you know, so they get kind of windburnt and they fall off all the time, and I put them on. Yeah, and now I don't have any, they're all, they're all beat the shit out of my bicycle. Somebody said something the other day, they said, hey, your poppies are looking pretty weak.
I got a word in here. 1887.
Holy cow, I got, uh, those kids flip my dabs up every time.
I had a double headed quarter for them. Double headed.
Play something top.
Really?
I like a little beach shop, they had it like as a magic trick type. I don't know what happened to it.
Man.
You always pick it.
This is a bunch of goddamn kids.
I, I put it in five, can I take two?
No.
Yes, you can, take, take.
Let me get them out of here. There we go, there's one, two, I'm taking two. Well, you're taking $2, that.
No.
Well, I know when Keith came here, the dust walks around, it's so muddy. Oh, okay. I, well, what's next? Oh, you, yeah, you're gonna move the.
Grandma, Grandma Donna.
Where the hell is that? So you're gonna move up your reading garden? We need to put it on the agenda.
Hey, I think.
Like that.
Let's kind of go a little bit out of order and we'll go to the libraries next.
Yeah.
To keep that going. Just a question I have, what's your, you know, what's your plan for reopening and so forth?
Good idea.
I can't hear you, it's right. Because most libraries are opening, they are, I'm wondering what's up. No, I know that, I meant opening up.
The next step is that you can open, but you can only have so many people in. And you have to, you can't count by the square feet of building, you have to include the space, this, you know, the stacks, libraries, like books that will count. So we have to, I think, call and make appointments to come in at a certain time. Because we wouldn't want like five families in there at the same time because then you have to have kids hanging around. But it's gonna be on stage then and.
When will that start?
We got a meeting.
We have a meeting.
I'm, I'm just seeing other ones opening up and ours is still closed and I'm gonna.
We're doing the same thing with pool. Pools are open up and you only can have swim lessons for Iowa size or lap size and they have to call and make an appointment.
Some libraries are not even gonna let people browse, you can't even say that, you gotta be able to look at books, you know, and see what's in them.
Because to me, it wasn't much, making much sense. If you're, you're closed anyway.
We did it on Tuesday, right?
We did, I'll get one down there for you, Jay, I'll get more. We meet on the 16th, we probably could open Wednesday. And, um, we are doing a summer reading program, but we're going to not have any, you know, like story times or day programs or anything like that, and so to make it easier for, like, your parents and everybody, either they can check the book saddle library or they can read what they have at home and they'll let it count. I think we'll also keep offering curbside for those who don't feel comfortable coming in. But the main point is to get, get it going by.
I agree, I agree with that, too. I agree.
Eleven to six or number five, and you'll have to be sure to clean, anybody will have to distance out the computers, you know, and then clean, you know, have food, juice, and stuff like that.
Okay, well, you want to talk about the, your outdoor, uh, reading or garden plans and specs? Again, if it wasn't gonna be open, it didn't make any sense like this, so, but if you're gonna open, then we should look at it.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's not gonna be open this year anyway, I don't think, I don't know what the construction schedule is, but.
Yeah, I don't know either, yeah. I, I, it wouldn't be ready to go. Okay, good.
Uh, we have, uh, Michael LeClair, yeah, he's on the call here with us.
All right.
You're up, Michael.
All right, uh, thank you, everybody, uh, thank you, Sharon, Chris and counsel for all your hard work during all this craziness and appreciate you accommodating me, uh, virtually today. I guess for counsel's, uh, sake, do you want me to walk you through the process a little bit and just show you the final drawings quick? And then go into the cost estimate? Or just go right into the cost estimate? Basically, today, we're just asking for your approval to release, uh, the specifications and drawings out to bid. We do have a tentative schedule for that. Let me bring that up here, one sec.
Go through your first suggestion? Go through the whole thing, just bring us that back up to.
So, um, if I can hit, I'll hit the present button and I'll walk you through a quick PowerPoint and then walk you through kind of cost estimate and anticipated schedule, how's that sound?
Great.
Okay?
Give it a shot.
All right. Tell me when you can see my screen. Uh, share. Give it a s-. Share. All right. Can you see that?
Yep, yep, we can.
Yes.
All right, um, I'm, let's see. Slideshow. All right, so there's kind of the open slide, we started basically with a public input Pinterest board where people could pin ideas. The general public could pin ideas that they want, so it gave us a visual language with which to start designing. And we put up a, uh, public input, uh, white erase board in the library itself so that people could come, write their ideas down. Um, and this is kind of what that looks like when you quantify all the things up. Um, apparently, a lot of kids thought a petting zoo would be a good idea, but that's not gonna be there, but the bigger words mean more people suggested those things, so that's kind of what this became. So from that, we went into schematic design and initially, we're looking at instead of making rectilinear planter beds or just having one edge of a planter bed, we would use these hexagonal pavers and make little areas of planter bed that could create intimate spaces for reading, um, but also areas where we could highlight, um, vegetation, so these little areas become, uh, spaces for reading and learning about, uh, kind of plants and ecosystem through interpretive education signs. So that's essentially the layout with a shade trellis and, um, a, uh, enclosure fence there. These are some older conceptual photos, but it'll give you a better idea. And one thing we've done to kind of control costs is to develop a series of alternates, which I'll get into more detail with, uh, the cost estimate. But here's just some views of what that would look like, you know, little areas where you're omitting some of those hexagonal pavers and creating kind of organic shaped, um, planter areas where you can have interpretive signs and then places for reading. And that's what a couple of these just highlight. And this trellis space can be used for various, uh, things or various programs, uh, however the library chooses, uh, to use that, so. Uh, going into construction documents here, just kind of walk you through them. We will be demoing and replacing the existing, uh, part of the walk that connects the public sidewalk to that exterior door on the south side. And, uh, because of that fence that was requested, which will be mimicking the fence at the senior center, we will be moving a couple of those existing trees out front, but they will all stay there. This is kind of what that looks like without the plant, so you can kind of see where, uh, some of those planting areas get and then where the solid walking surface is. Um, and then this is a ADA ramp, uh, all the way up to the door and we'll be installing an automatic opener and closer uh, to make that an ADA accessible entrance to the building. So the two, uh, options for the trellis, it, well, we actually have three. One is a wood trellis, one is a metal trellis, uh, that'll help, uh, with some costs when we get cost back. We also put in an alternate for a pre-manufactured option, uh, just to help give contractors a little bit more flexibility and I'll go into that here shortly. The pavers will have a concrete underlay, so this is just showing the concrete underlay for both of them. The other thing, let's see, which I think starts to get shown here is we also have alternate for the scope of the project, the base bid, if you can see my cursor, it's just this outside here, but we have an alternate with it making an L, basically going back to that existing, uh, fence that's concealing, uh, some of the utility equipment. Uh, this is just kind of showing that base bid, uh, with some of the plants in there. You can see, if I go back, that the, the concrete edge underneath is, um, it has hard edges, but then when we put the pavers on top, that's where we get our, uh, kind of staggered edge. And so this is just that, uh, alternate on the northwest side with its planting plan. And then details about, uh, the fence, the ramp, uh, paver installation, um, kind of the little detail stuff, um, that bore most people and get architects excited. Here are two, the two design details for the trellis, again, the base bid being a cedar wood one, uh, the alternate, uh, being a steel one. I do anticipate the steel one coming in high, uh, that's why we provided the alternates and like I said, there's also a pre-manufactured option that can help control cost. And then these are from a sign manufacturer and I can't really zoom up on them, but they're interpretive signs that talk about Iowa ecology, Iowa native plants, Iowa native birds and butterflies, that type of stuff, and then to make it a low maintenance garden, which was a request, uh, from the get-go, uh, we went with a native planting palette, because it won't require, uh, extensive irrigation systems, uh, maintaining, uh, irrigation system, those can add costs, uh, not only upfront, but over time. Uh, so largely, the garden will feature, uh, it will feature flowers, there will be some grasses, but they will all be natives, heavily leaning on the flower side. Uh, that's quickly it for the drawings and we can circle back around and then I'm not gonna go through every page of this, but the other part is the specifications. That's just kind of the table of contents, uh, that gives, uh, instructions to bidders and then details out, uh, specific products, uh, and manufacturers that are, uh, specified for the project. Cost estimate wise, let me get into that a little bit. Uh, we use three methods, uh, for cost estimating, the one is what you see in front of you here. The one is what you see in front of you here, RS means, which I know you can't read these pages, but basically it'll give you a unit price for certain things like concrete pore, um different materials, crushed rock, underlay, and then you're able to say what your location is and it gives you a factor. So as long as you can figure out square feet, square yard, yards, cubic yards, and then figuring your location factor, uh it gives you a fairly accurate uh cost estimate. The other two are just it's past experience, knowing what um certain things come in with other things we bit bid out and then straight up quotes from uh contractors. And so we kind of used all three in developing our bids. And I think I'm going to jump out of this because I can make it a little bit bigger on this other screen here for you all. Uh, this is what we came uh came to with our our cost estimate. Now, everything in yellow here are alternates. So really, altogether, I think I calculated we have, I gotta scroll to the bottom, about eighteen thousand six hundred to play with for alternates that could be cut out. And there's a little bit more, for example, um the plantings, if we are to use live plants, uh which would require less maintenance upfront, that's about eighteen hundred dollars. But we could cut that down to probably like five hundred dollars if we were to seed it, um if bids came in really high. Uh, the one thing that I was unable to get a bid for from the fencing company, and I went directly with American Fencing, who uh did the senior center fence, were the columns. Um, so that's something we'll have to wait and see what uh they end up uh bidding. Otherwise, what I come down to or down with is one ninety-five eight uh for a cost estimate, which is just below um our budget. Speaking with contractors, they have said you could probably expect it to come in higher than normal, not really because of their workload or uh their staffing related to COVID, but more related to uncertainty in the supply chain. Um, so we'll just have to kind of see how that affects um affects the bids. I think that's really all I have. Um, unless you want me to go back to any specific slide or something. Uh, but like I said, today, we're just here to get your approval to proceed uh with bidding the project and to see where it comes out at. Um, our general schedule is, you know, God permitting, that life is back to normal. We have a pre-bid conference that's optional for contractors at the library where they can walk the site and ask any questions about the drawings. Uh, receipt of bids, August seventeenth, I propose we approve or open them right after that. So uh three P M, receipt of bids, three fifteen, open them, announce what they are. And then the following uh city council meeting, we can choose uh what contractor to award the project to uh based on what bits come in as um.
Did I understand you correctly that one point nine five eight million?
No.
No, 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 no. A hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred was the, that our budget's two hundred thousand. So I think we're doing pretty good, noting that we have eighteen thousand six hundred of that amount that is alternate that could be cut out um should they come in high.
So two hundred thousand, roughly.
Correct.
Better than two million.
That's quite a garden, a two million dollar garden. They exist. Quite need it.
That's why I wanted.
Understood. Any other questions?
That's what the government.
What's two, two hundred thousand?
You repeat that, I think.
Well, I think you're you're close to budget. I think that's the working to get it at that.
Yeah.
At their maximum uh would be your assignment, but uh it's probably a move ahead situation.
Yes, I would say.
I can only hope that conditions will approve. Um, one thing with the schedule as it is, like contractors are probably already fall up um through summer, so trying to push it any earlier would probably uh increase uh the bid because then you're competing with other projects, but they're probably still working to fill some of their fall work. So that's kind of what we're aiming for.
Are you guys still looking for the summer or you think you next spring, early next year or so?
Yeah, plant.
Contractors may be looking at you things for next year. That'd be something.
Right.
Be more reasonable.
And Chris had mentioned, depending on how they come up, maybe we do agree to push it or rebid it. Um, the other thing is when we do have a pre-bid conference, uh just being clear that we'll be flexible with the contractors. Like, you're probably not going to get plants installed yet this year. They might be able to get the hardscape um work done this year and then in spring install plants or something. So. But that's why we have a pre-bid conference.
Okay, good.
Yeah, good.
Well, uh, why don't we, I can get a motion to.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any other comments from you guys?
Sounds nice. You like it? The last, I had a question the last time they presented, and I was explaining those at times.
You guys, that's you? Okay, well, hold on a minute. Steve?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, fingers crossed that they come in in our favor, so we'll see.
Yeah, good. Thanks.
I guess I'll sign off if there's no further questions, and thanks, everyone, for their efforts and hard work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to the.
Yep, where Woda Cooper wants to build their facility, so it's. And we uh we double-checked with them on the on the rezoning. So on uh the bottom of the first page there, it lists the list, the area that it is, one dash seventy-eight dash two W lots, eight through eleven, and that's half of that eight acre uh plat there. So that's what, that's they requested rezone, that's what we're rezoning. The other half of that field, that empty field there, will be left as commercial. Yeah, they haven't gotten their funding through IFA yet, so. No, no, they don't have their IFA funding yet, so.
So we need a motion for to approve that.
So this is, this is an ordinance, so you're amending our ordinance, so it's three readings unless you waive the three readings. And there, I don't, there's no reason to waive them, I don't think.
Hey, this is the second, if I remember.
No, it's the first reading.
This is the first.
Yeah.
No seconding.
Moved and seconded. You through the discussion? Chair?
Yes.
Ted? Doc? Yes. And Steve?
Yeah.
Done. Mayor Items?
So, put that.
Correspondents, you seen the note from Lori? And there's a little get to get on that too, Chris?
Yeah, on the twelfth, we're gonna have a little reception for Lori. That's, yes, that's next week. This Friday, sorry, this Friday. Yes, that'd be this Friday.
What's the time?
Four to six.
And it's that?
The community center.
Four to six.
Okay, well, that's good. Mayor Items, only thing, there's a couple things. Um, one thing, Dave, it's coming to you at least from me. With all the hell of a loo coming around about police departments, you certainly have my support and the rest of this group to continue. There's no planning for any funding or anything else. Just keep going. We appreciate what you do. Um, other things, openings, wondering about city hall, parks, playgrounds, library found out about. Uh, what's the plan, Chris?
Yeah, we talked about that um uh last week. We talked about uh city hall. Yeah, I think we're just gonna leave the sign up says please call ahead, but the city hall will be open.
Okay, but someday we just gotta just take that down and just.
Right.
Because this is a public building, we need to open it up.
Right. But but we have been able to triage a lot of stuff through the phone, so if we can, if we can limit down, if people don't need to come in, then. Yeah.
Always come in the back door or the side door, but I'm just saying, it's a public building.
Right.
Look, it's Ted Locking.
Parts? Anything new on that?
Yeah, bathrooms are open.
Bathrooms are open, it's all opened up. Are the water pumps turned on by?
I don't think, I think they left them off.
Well, we better get them turned on.
I don't know, that's the big one.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
They don't have butt washers out of a cause, they don't, anywhere where there's.
Oh, you're saying because.
Where you all touch, anything you all touch, which is a playground, which is still kind of. I'm just gonna say, yeah, but yeah, most of that, like when they voted, I went up to the community center, here's your pen, they'll give it back.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too, you know, they don't want it back.
That's interesting. Yeah, I don't think the water pumps.
I know the softball guys started playing.
Yeah.
Right, I mean.
Yep.
Really, it's on. So we're, uh, if we could maybe make a little laminated sign and put on the water faucet because of COVID.
Oh, yeah.
Turn on the faucets.
Yep.
Cherrydale and uh Westview and the city park, that way they do have somebody, how can they get the wire on? You know, due to regulations, we're not supposed to turn these water.
Yeah.
That will answer a lot of questions. Say I'm beating my ass to you.
All right, we'll do that. Yep, yeah, we'll get that done.
That is, the community things, you're right. You can't even get a salt shaker that someone else has used.
Right.
But uh, it's a little goofy, but we'll get through it. It's better than what it was.
Yes, it certainly is.
Okay, uh administrative items, camera systems, Dave Clark?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to get you guys' input on this. Something that I wanted to do, and I was talking to Chris about that we feel like we need to do. Um, we've been wanting to put camera on the front side of this building for a couple of reasons. One, we have a cash box out there. Here recently, we had an incident with that that we ended up resolving. Uh, the other thing is that we brought it by a community member, and I think it's a great idea. Uh, as a society, we do a lot of trading on social media, marketplace, you know, eBay, whatever. And they had, uh, they did like, they might have safe place to conduct this, okay? Just right outside, put a sign up there that says that this area is twenty-four seven monitored, audio and video and whatever. And actually, probably the big one is child custody issues. We have to go out and keep the peace all the time with parents, you know, make sure nothing happens. If we had a twenty-four seven monitored place, that makes things a lot easier. So that's something that we've kind of wanted to do for a while. My original intention was to tie that into the video system that I have over there at the PD. It's a very, very nice system. However, that did create some uh security issues with the evidence videos that are on there, interviews, things like that. Uh, we didn't want anything being overwritten. Uh, so now we're gonna put in a whole new video system. Then talking to Ted, we're gonna kind of piggyback that and add some for the rock. Now, that's where things get a little bit more expensive. So where I'm talking to you guys, I just kind of want to get an idea of where you're at. The video system that I'm recommending is an alibi system. It's the same one that we have over there. Uh, it's a stellar system, great tech support, really, really good. That rock, the Freedom Rock, is just under three hundred feet from the edge of the. Uh, as you told me, four hundred, you get something cheaper than this. But this is also from alibis, four met zoom, so we can change it. It's got an app on our phones, and we can get it to whoever counts member, where you can access that camera, and you can zoom it in, you can move it around, you can do whatever. But the big thing with that, it's it's optical versus digital zoom, okay? So if you don't know the difference, digital zoom is you take a cell phone picture and you blow it up, and all of a sudden it gets pixelated and it gets whatever. So all it really does is makes the pixels bigger, but it degrades the photo. Optical zoom is a little bit like a, like binoculars, where you move it and it gets a little blurry and then you.
Like a nice camera.
Fix it and then it zooms it in. All right, so optical zoom takes that, it piggybacks on top of that digital zoom where the pixels are bigger, but then it fine tunes and it makes a much better photo. So to get to that level out there, we need a minimum twenty, twenty-five X optic. But the big one is is the infrared, be the night vision, okay? This particular camera that I'm looking at, it has infrared capabilities of up to four hundred and ninety-two feet. Now, that gets us past the rock. That gets us to the depot. That gets us to be able to see what's going on there. I'm assuming if that, if our Freedom Rock is gonna be defaced, it's not gonna be done until daylight. It's gonna be done at night. So the infrared would be the more important factor. This particular camera is right about twelve hundred bucks. Now, this is from one of our alibi dealers that I talked to today. Uh, I I spent some time getting quotes. The quote for the system, and what I quoted out was four total cameras that includes DVR, includes four terabytes of memory. This particular camera also has a backup that backs up to the cloud, where you can put a two hundred fifty-six gig S D card in it in case the whole world falls apart, you know? I priced out a four camera system, one directly in the front, in front of city hall and on our cash box, one potentially facing that way going to the downtown area, and one facing that way going towards the post office, and then one to the back going to the Freedom Rock. Um, I I think I can get the camera system for around two thousand, but I'd like, I think it'll be two thousand, but I'd like to say twenty-five hundred. Where we would incur the most cost would be installing it, generally with security systems. Whatever the cost of the system, you can double that for the installation, okay? The three, four hundred dollar systems cost because they're just easier to install. The more advanced systems, it costs more money. I will take care of all of that.
Where would you hang the one for Freedom Rock, on the back building or up on the corner here?
Up on the corner.
So you could.
Yeah, so I was looking around today doing some scouting. I went up and checked some things. I believe that I can get to the attic at all these different spots. Originally, we were talking about going out window sales and getting up into the fashion, whatever, but um I think I can do, come up from my office, which is where the DVR would be. It'd actually be an NVR, be a network video connection. It will be wired uh through this current system that we're looking at, um going through that network cable. That's your power source, that's your audio source, that's your record source. It's all in one cable, so you're not having to run a bunch of different stuff. The cameras are actually powered by the DVR itself, okay? Uh, with four terabytes and four cameras running twenty-four seven all the time, it'll take about thirty days before that's filled up. And as it fills up, it'll just overwrite whatever's happening. So I assume that we'll know that an event happened within thirty days.
Yeah.
You know?
You can adjust that, too.
Yeah, you can, well, it, just changing the resolution.
Four terabytes is decent. I mean, do they have options, go eight or twenty-four?
Yeah, yeah, that's just what comes with this system. So this one will actually go up to sixteen if I want it.
Can you expand it once you have it?
The one that I have over there has four S A slots for hard drives. Now, currently, I have sixteen over there, but we can go up to twenty-four, I think, in that one. So it has four separate bays for hard drives. So, yeah, we can expand it if we need to somewhere later.
On the Freedom Rock, I mean, this is just tech tactical. I mean, typically, they're available of presets. So in other words, at a certain point in time, you'd want to focus on the Freedom Rock, sit there all night or whatever versus poor or what have you. I mean, is that, have that.
Yeah, uh, you actually can do that. You can kind of move it around and then.
Just constantly pans the.
You can do uh three hundred and sixty degree pan or. You can do, uh, 360 degree pan or you can. And what you wanna do around, or this thing, it has 180 field of vision, so if it sets back a little bit, you actually, you catch the opening to the garage, you catch part of Elder Park over here, you catch a big portion of it, and then when there's a section that you wanna see, maybe something happens to Elder Park, you essentially draw a square on that particular picture and it zooms in on that. So, you square up, I wanna see this, and it zooms over there. So, keeping it at a standard 180 degree field of vision, and then just picking what you wanna see, um, potentially is a better approach. The camera at the office here does the same thing.
Eventually, I think they'll probably, you know, this is a great start, but I think eventually we'll probably have more cameras.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm going with an eight, I'm going with the ability to have eight instead of just doing the four, for the eventual expandability, right now, four cameras, if you guys want me to get more, I can.
No, but I'm just saying, likelihood in the future, we probably will.
Maybe we'll do one on the backside over there.
We could, or we could have one more remotely than that.
We'll know who's been stealing our damn basketball nets all these freaking years up that back door.
Um, and like.
We need new.
I would have, I'll have to get some, um.
Got like a camera zone, maybe?
Yeah, some network cable, I mean, I'll, uh, I think I have the crimper tool, I, I did this office over here, so I think I have all that stuff still, but like fittings, different things like that. I mean, if I can get a, uh, the okay at, at 2,500 bucks, I think I can.
Netflix C3000, oh, hell, that's great.
Netflix C3?
The external cameras, do they have heaters and the housings and so forth for winter?
Uh, this particular one is good to up to, it's supposed to be up to 149 degrees Fahrenheit and 22 degrees.
So, there's a little heating element there somewhere.
Yeah, it's gotta be one of them somewhere. I guess I didn't read that, I just read. I'm pretty certain that we won't be over 149 degrees and.
I hope.
You know?
But it might be 22 below.
Yeah.
It's actually 22 below.
We're gonna have to wait on, hey, we don't have to do anything to the rock, cause it's 30 below zero either.
They, they have other cameras that are, are more money and probably do more things, I think this one's just a good solid.
Start.
And if it's your, something happens, it's not quite right.
1,200 bucks for those, that's a nice price.
I thought.
If they're feature rich at that price.
Yeah, and actually, if you wanna take a look at it, I printed this out specifically for you.
Oh, that's, I'm fine.
He's seen it up a little bit.
Excellent, not seeking 3000.
Probably more so.
Ten second. It was there. Okay, let's move on to the money, sir.
Yes.
Yeah, Doc?
Yes.
Doc? And Steve?
Yes.
Done. Uh, again, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, appreciate you installing it. Today would've been a little rough up there, I think a little toasty.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was, I was up in the attic over there taking pictures, yeah, it was hot.
Uh, other admin items?
Yes. Um, wanted to let you guys know, you know, the curves we did for the water main breaks, we've got, I, I think most of those are all done now. I, we still have one that's, that's not quite finished yet, but we've got them, we got all that done. Uh, I wanted to let you know, we are, well, it's kind of a part of a bigger thing. I went over some of our, um, our receipts for road use tax and, uh, uh, sales tax. Uh, road use tax, our, our collections for the last three months have been down about 19%. Um, sales tax only been off about 5%, which was, I thought was good. Um, I would, you know, as gas prices kinda came down and people start picking up, I know when I'm out driving on the, you know, driving around, there's a lot more people out driving now, so I would expect, at least road use tax, that's the bottom on that, I would think that would start coming up. And of course, gas prices have started coming back up, so. Um, anyway.
You know, that's much better than I guessed it would be.
Yes.
I thought it'd be more than 19.
Yeah, there's, there were, the estimates were 20, 25% was what, on both of them, were the early estimates, so for us, that's not too bad, I don't think.
Drive down Interstate 80, you can put your cruise control on.
Yeah.
There's no way out there.
Yeah.
Very unusual.
Yes, so tho- those are kinda positives. Uh, I'm waiting till the end of this month to evaluate our, I, we kinda look at, at the end of June, we always look at fund balances and where we're at. Of course, you know, the August is coming in the fall and look at those things as well. But at that time, I'm gonna look at garbage rates and make sure we're in line on garbage rates, we haven't raised those for a couple of years. So, we're gonna do an evaluation of that at the end of June here, uh, beginning of July. So, I'll get a report back to you guys about that, where we're at with the garbage rates. So, I was kinda looking at those things this, this month. Um, we hired our new park guy, um, Austin Crowston, he's done, he's doing a pretty good job, taking right to it. So, Bobby's been, it was in my office today, he's pretty impressed with him, uh, and he's, he shows some real good initiative, which we like. Um. Let's see, oh, um, wanna remind everybody that, that, uh, this month, uh, we're having light fees and the shut offs are going back to the way they were as usual, so, and bills are due on the 20th, so I wanna. I'm gonna talk to Bo tomorrow and we'll get those all set up for the rest of you guys, so, um, you guys can use them. I, I have mine, I'm kinda using tonight just to see how it works. So, and I think, and we go back over to our old council chambers there, I was talking to Best Buy, and Best Buy's got a home agent, and she's going to, um, that is, I don't have to go into Best Buy, basically, I can go through her and she can, she can tell me what I need and what, give me options on different prices and stuff, but we'll put two TVs up in there, and the idea is that we'll put them on one rack, I kinda like a V, so the audience will see one side and the council will see the other side. Cause I think presentations like this are gonna become more the norm.
Yeah.
So, um, but anyway, I, I talked to them, they gave us a pretty real good deal on the, on the tablets and knocked $30 off tablet for them. So, we got tablets and covers, and I'll get them all set up and, uh, get them delivered to you folks, so you have them as well. Uh, that went pretty well, I was, I mean, I was over in Best Buy for two hours, which I didn't really wanna do, but it all worked out pretty well. Um. We have, we, we've been doing evaluations for the employees last, uh, week or two, continuing them next week, and then we're gonna bring, um, recommendations to the council at the next meeting for, uh, for pay raises. Uh, I. I didn't ask, but somebody else stood on the, on the manager's net, asked how everybody was proceeding with pay raises, and most municipalities are, are gonna, are going to proceed as budgeted for pay raises, I know about you guys down in Musketeen.
Uh, yeah, it was a little different, but yeah.
Was it? So. So, uh, I talked to the mayor and, and he and I were kind of the same mind that we would proceed as budgeted, but, uh, we'll have the decision to make at the next ma- uh, next council meeting, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up.
The only thing we thought of, if, if you look at their taxes coming in, if there's some reason it's crazy, then we'd have to review it, but.
Right.
Otherwise, you know?
Yeah, and, and we, we've already been talking to our guys, certainly down at Public Works, that, you know, if, if the economy doesn't rebound the way it should and property tax collections aren't, aren't where we think they are, then next year you might not see raises then.
That's what we talked about too.
Yeah, so we're already making that.
For this year.
Yes, so we're gonna go as budgeted this year, but, you know, if the world's still crazy next time around, you might not get them next time around then, so. Uh, but that'll be up to you guys to decide at the next, the next meeting. Last, last thing I wanted to talk about, uh, um. Since Kit took over as the new city clerk, um, then, then Lori was, Lori was certainly more old school, which is, which was fine. I mean, we all liked the way Lori did business, but, um, Kit would like to invest in some software to upgrade what we have. We kinda have the base accounting software version, and she'd like to upgrade that, so it's a more integrated system. Uh, Kit, do you have anything to say on that?
Well, when, you know, we used to build all together with the light plant and we were all using the same software. Well, then, um, they didn't support that software anymore, and so the light plant upgraded. Well, um, Lori wasn't ready to make that change, so she stayed on it. Well, then it got to the point where they were no longer even supporting what Lori was using, and Lori had to take, you know, like, the B step, where, you know, the other upgrading that the light plant took, was more, more like, yeah, a G or an H step, M, because right now, we're constantly doing two sides to it. We get to put the payments in here, but then we act, I have to actually turn around and put it back into the other software to make it combined back and forth, whereas if we used, stuck with the same software as the light plant went to, then when we make our payments, it's automatically on our side.
That makes sense.
And we're always doing, everything's doubled.
They did get it though to where you can enter one set of data and it'll do both, cause there for years, we, we fought that, you couldn't even, nobody could even figure out how to do that.
Um, the way the net newest software will be, it will automatically go into our side. Um, when we do payments, when we do receipts, it'll automatically go into our general ledger without. Us doing double. You know, they gotta do payments, then I gotta put the receipts in the general ledger, where. Same thing with payroll, you always had to do everything twice on pay ledger. Supposedly, the way it's supposed to work is.
It's not cheap, and they, and the sport is.
But we've done that.
Really good.
Well.
15 years ago, we, we matched them every time. It was, you know, 15,000, 16,000, 10,000, you know, but.
Right.
It does, it just keep going up higher all the time.
That makes no sense to me, people, those are two things.
Cause you're, you're, it's greater chance to enter of a.
Oh, there, exactly.
And then you're paying for all that time too, I mean, we're paying you to do that.
Once the upgrade takes place to the flight background, then is there a, you know, software protection plan where you pay each year to get the latest?
Yeah, which we paid already, the one we have.
Yeah.
We already pay that.
That would keep us moving.
Yes.
Right.
Makes no sense now.
Why don't you move ahead and see what?
Okay.
We're gonna do a.
We can put it on the next week.
We'll have it on the next. And we put a bar, we put a kind of a placeholder in our budget for next year anyway, for it, so.
Okay. Will you have to upgrade your server or anything, or will they come in and tell you that?
I don't think, I don't think we should have to.
I don't think we should have to, no.
Okay.
Because, you know, we already have part of ours, but we have the split server now, and part of it is with the light plant's, um, software out, and then part of it has the other software, and we already are using that same software on the light plant part of our server. So, we're just taking the.
Be prepared, there may be hiccups.
Oh, yeah, there always are.
Yes.
There was when we, when we changed to this one, there was.
There was, yes. In fact, Lori was, when we changed to the fund balance, Lori was doing two sets of books for almost six months before they could get it all to work, so.
Tech support will say you need better hardware.
Uh, we, we just upgraded that, not too long.
Right.
So, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna start doing more of this, are we gonna have to upgrade? Or will we go to the other side so we don't have more problems like where the guy?
Well, that could be on his end too.
Right. You're never gonna get a better internet signal than what we got.
Right, best of the best.
Right, of what we, yeah.
Yes, that's all.
Do you have an inspection? I think there's one more.
Is there one more that's higher, that could be?
So, when we started doing everything, when we went from press hard five copies to doing more online stuff, we had to bump up ours, cause we were using so much bandwidth over there.
Right.
I think there's one more.
Is there one more, that could be? Alright. So, alright.
More, more than likely, you can definitely get fiber from WTC and be at a gig, cause right now, if you're on DSL, it's not even comparable to the higher business packages they could offer. Cause we're sitting at a gig at school, they had fiber direct to us.
Right. Good. Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Chris?
Uh, no. That's all I get.
My wife said that she almost broke her whole wheel off in a pothole on Mall Street.
Yeah, it was a summit, Mall? Those two little ones.
Text me when you see the potholes. Is there? Okay.
I was walking out the door and she goes, hey.
Yeah, I should've text you two weeks ago.
Oh, there's the pads that came apart there? Okay.
I'm probably on the, uh, I'm probably on the committee for, what is it, uh, uh, parks, I don't know. But it, I was just wondering if we could talk to the, the park committee, and, and, and they need to make a decision on that pothole or what we're gonna do.
Those are parks where they're.
Yeah, either, you know, clean it up and flip the nets up, or.
I was just talking.
Cause it's really an eye.
I was just talking to Bobby today about some of the stuff we're working on.
Yeah. Chris, did you hear that?
I'm sorry.
Painting the white building up there, it's not complete, up at, uh, Old Grade School?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I guess, is it?
Maybe that's.
Uh. There's, there's some maintenance, we have to do that something.
Yeah.
Uh, the park board?
Park board, yeah.
Are we getting any kids summer help this year of any kind?
We were not planning on it.
Oh, I didn't know I was just asking.
Well, one of the crazy person will keep the ball diamonds, cause he plays softball. He'll keep the ball diamonds.
Yeah, there you go. He plays for pretty steep, remember?
But first thing you move.
You know? So, anything else on?
Freedom Rock is moving forward. Rocket seal.
Nothing's gone, we're all seeing around it kinda, add air of mystery to it.
He's done that.
Uh, yeah, Bob was done, God.
I'm kidding, I'm, I'm.
You have some warm days in that sucker, boy, I was like.
It was all crazy.
Where's he?
Yeah.
I saw some pictures already, that's what I mean.
But, uh, so that. Have a ranging meeting between, uh, landscaping, so we can see the next, run the downward slide.
Well, this, this makes very important what Dave brought up, we get some security for him.
Well, we're hoping if everything turns out, it's to have some form of, uh, dedication, uh, weekend after Labor Day, something like that, if possible.
Well, since they painted, uh, now, uh, Kinnick's statue over the week.
Yeah.
You said they already cleaned it?
Yeah, they got it cleaned.
Yeah, they already did.
Did you read all the sayings on it?
Yeah.
Smashed the windows on the, uh, yeah. Skywalk?
Oh, did they really?
Yeah.
Well, now, I think they were close to some football player, wasn't that, was that a good quote? Or was he saying?
He was griping about the wake of.
He was griping about, okay.
Sitting.
Well, most weight coaches.
Yeah. They make their life miserable.
At least they haven't been bad to say about the police.
Um, is the meeting over? The, the meeting's probably adjourned then?
It's a, yeah.
I think.
I don't know, we want this in the minutes, that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Oh, are we adjourned, what, what do we do, are we adjourned?
Yeah.
Where? What if we work for Lori, we do any Lori as a council?
Oh, yeah, it's a good, good point, but we were, the.
Worker anymore. Who, who, who are you supposed to say who?
We are.
We get the bonus again.
We're looking at. We're looking at doing a, a, that, um, Lori Mall Brown Wall of Fame, I think that's what we're, I think that's what we're gonna do for that.